She's gonna take, so here's what we're gonna do. You would open the meeting, she would do the invocation, uh, pledge of allegiance, and then, um, roll call, and then we could vote. Good?
Lance, I could do, I could do that as a council person, uh, who's on the meeting, uh. You know, if I would, if I was still president of a council, that would be probably my role to do that anyway, but, um.
Yeah, Lance can't hear you, Dick. He can only hear me.
Oh, okay.
Can't hear real well.
Okay, all right, um. Okay, well, I will go ahead and let's just do it this way. Let's just, I'll go ahead and open the meeting. And I will do the invocation, Dick, if you want to do the pledge of allegiance. How's that sound?
That sounds good.
Okay, right, all right. I'll call the May eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one city council meeting to order. And I will start off with the invocation. Lord, we ask for your blessing on our community and on our world during this time. Be with our leaders as they guide us and make decisions to keep our citizens safe. Give them the wisdom and the knowledge that they need. In your name we pray. Amen. And Dick, will you do the pledge of allegiance?
Uh, yeah, I'll try to remember it all. I pledge allegiance. Actually, I have some memory problems. Maybe you better be.
Okay.
Cause I'm.
Okay. All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, uh, now I will do roll call. Becker?
Here.
Souter?
Air.
McBane?
Here.
Liston?
Air.
DiTilio?
Here.
Banner?
Here.
Noel?
Here.
Willard?
Here.
Hudson?
Here.
Okay, now I will entertain a motion to concur with city manager Lance Willard and chief of police William Myers to hire Nathaniel Cottis as a part-time police officer for the city of Columbia Police Department. So I have a motion to that effect.
So moved.
Okay, Mr. McBane moved, and second, was that Mr. Liston?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, and on roll call, Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
DiTilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Noel, would you like to administer the oath of service to Nathaniel?
I name Tom Spur. I pay a present from this where I will support the constitutional United States, Constitution of the state Ohio. That was the Constitution of the United States. They go right up. Charter and ordinances of the city of Columbia, Ohio. Charter and the ordinance. In Ohio. And that I will faithfully discharge my duties as part-time office. Faithfully discharge my duties as a one-offs. Which I have been appointed. Guys in it. So I just wanna interject here real quick. Um, Travis, you wanna fill us in? What, what, what happened?
Apparently this piece failed today.
Okay.
So under power, it keeps power from the display.
Okay.
Source, jumping to a source and it's not working.
Okay, well, thank you very much for, now, uh, yeah, I know this isn't on your service contract, so. I appreciate it.
I apologize.
Yeah. Thanks, baby. Good luck. Okay, so, uh, you guys wanna do a recess, uh, Dick, or Mark, or somebody?
Yeah.
Yes, I have a motion. Go ahead, Dick.
Uh, I'd move that we go to research until seven thirty. Not research, uh, a motion.
Recession.
Recession until seven thirty.
Okay, do we have a second? DiTilio, okay? All right. Okay, and roll call on the motion to recess, Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
DiTilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Okay, we're in recess until seven thirty. On. I, okay. I believe we have everyone now at seven twenty-nine, so we'll wait till, oh, says seven thirty.
Okay. I'd like to entertain a motion to reconvene the city of Columbia City Council meeting of May eighteenth.
So moved. Second.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
DiTilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, so we'll resume the meeting. Uh, we're gonna review, uh, resume that meeting at item five, approval of minutes of the meeting. The city council meetings of May fourth, two thousand twenty-one, and the special meeting on May eighth, two thousand twenty-one.
So moved.
Second.
Dan, there is a correction on the special meeting minutes. Um, where the paragraph starts Noel noted ordinance twenty-one. In the votes, it has Noel instead of Banner for the yay votes.
Okay, uh, let me pull that up here. The special meeting and okay. Okay, where it.
Right above, um, you know, three quarters of the way down, it says Noel read ordinance twenty-one oh three oh seven nine. Right above that shows the vote. And it has Noel, and it should be Banner.
Yes, Mr. Noel does not vote anymore. You're right.
Tried to sneak one in. Time suck.
I must have cut and pasted from a meeting when Mr. Noel was still a council member. Okay, I will make that correction.
We'll find one for you, Rick, eventually.
Are there any other corrections? A hearing, none. Can we have a vote with that correction, noted correction?
Liston?
Yes.
DiTilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries. Next item is our reading of communications. And, uh, I have this one. I'm gonna read to you. Address to city council, but Columbia Music Boosters is requesting permission to hold a tag day in car wash on July thirty-one, two thousand twenty-one, from nine AM to three PM. Upon your approval, we will contact area business for their consent to allow students to stand outside of their business doors, asking for donations to support our music program. Please consider our request during your next meeting, and please contact me with any questions or concerns. Thank you for your consideration. Heather Buckles, who I believe is the president of the booster, music boosters, is that correct, Dan?
Uh, she's not the president. She's one of the fundraising chairs.
Okay, thank you. Do you wanna add anything, Dan, since you know a little bit?
Yeah, I can go ahead and add. Um, so I talked to Heather about the car wash. Uh, and she says that they are talking to Pizza Hut about doing it out there. Uh, and that's going back and forth at this point, so, um, when we make the final motion, we may wanna ask them to get back to us with the final car wash location, but, uh, I think that was, that was the only question that came up when I read that. So I reached out to Heather on it.
So the car wash will probably be at the Pizza Hut, but yet they'll be selling the, the
The, the tag day.
It'll be downtown.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
If the car wash is on private property, do we even need to put any input into it? Other than our approval to go ahead and do it?
Well, we have, we have to go ahead and approve the tag sale downtown.
We, we can, I guess we could approve the tag sale and show our support for the car wash. Yeah, we wanna do it that way, but, um, yeah, so I just, um.
I guess you make a motion like that.
What's that?
Why don't you make a motion to that effect?
Okay, um, so I will make a motion to approve the request as submitted, well, I'm sorry, to approve the request for the tag day. Um, and then to show our support or voice our support for the car wash as submitted. If that makes sense.
So second?
I'll second it.
Okay, any further discussion? Dan, we call the roll.
DiTilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next is reports of commissions and boards. Uh, first, we have the, you received a copy of the Parks and Recreation, excuse me, Park, Recreation and Cemetery Board Meeting Minutes of April twenty-six, two thousand twenty-one. And we also have the Planning Commission, Commission Meeting Minutes of May eleventh, two thousand twenty-one. Are there any questions or comments regarding either of those reports? I know we have, uh, Ron Detwiler and Terry on. You gentlemen, you're gonna speak at a later time, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Those reports will be, there's no other comments. Those reports will be accepted as submitted. Um. And next, we do have recognition of persons desiring to appear. And we have Ron Detwiler and Terry Schaefer discuss the Barstown Park and Pool Updates. Okay, Ron.
Thanks, everybody. Yeah, our purpose tonight really is to update you of what's going on in the park. As you know, it's a constant hustle and bustle over there. We currently have seven projects that are being, uh, worked on in the park, and we'd like to try to update council as far as progress at this point in time. We had a park board meeting last night, uh, and also RB had a meeting earlier tonight that McBean and I attended. Uh, so most of the information that it, that it will give you is very current and up to date. Uh, I'm gonna have a little help through this. I'm gonna start with Terry. Uh, as you know, we've been working on the pool and pavilions and with the CDC and the Health Department, et cetera. Now, as far as opening the pool, so I'm gonna let Terry, Terry tell you really what we're doing. Uh, a, a, on that end of it, as far as opening the pool and also the, uh, a bathhouse renovation, so.
Terry? Hey, you're on. Hello, council. Um, just wanted to bring you updates. Uh, first of all, we opened May twenty-ninth, not the twenty-fourth, like the paper said the other day after the last council meeting, so I wanted to get that cause I had a couple of people going, oh, you're opening a week early. I'm like, no, I'm not. So we've got the, uh, we're in really good shape to a degree. Well, there's no water in the pool yet, but it's painted blue. We're painting the black tomorrow. Um, we're hopefully gonna start filling this weekend. Um, as of the governor's orders, June second, we're gonna have our first pavilion rentals. Um, I do have a call into the Health Department. They did not get back to me today about everything. Cause I heard a rumor that you don't have to wear masks anymore in buildings and stuff, so I wanted to verify all that. I don't know if anybody else did or not. That's what I heard today. Cause the first weekend of the pool, which is the twenty-nine thirty, thirty-first, and with June second being the middle of the week, I wanted to see if we still had to wear masks, if people had to wear masks in the building, but I'll find out here shortly. Front gates are done and hung. They're working on the gates on the inside. The awning is up. It looks really nice. Uh, please, if you can, take a walk past the gazebo. The new roof is on. It's a copper metal roof, and it's absolutely really sharp. Um, we, um, are going to, the prices and everything, nothing's changing from last year for the pavilions, for the pool, or anything like that, so we're gonna stay the same. So no, no ordinance have to be changed or anything like that, and, um, that's about it in a nutshell. We're just double checking everything and making sure we're up to speed, and we're going from there.
Are you doing, are you doing season passes this year?
Yes, sir. Season passes, pool parties, um, swimming lessons, all of that. Yes, sir.
And is it open to everybody?
Everybody, everybody.
Basically, basically, our rules and regulations are pretty much going back to what they were prior to the COVID.
Right.
And one point that we want to make, uh, we went out on a limb last year as far as opening the pool, and we did very well. And we were able to work with the Health Department, uh, also the governor and the CDC. Uh, it, but we are doing the same this year. We're coming out of a pandemic, but we wanna make it perfectly clear that the rules are changing on a weekly basis, and we, we monitor them. Uh, and we're still following, uh, the advice of the governor and the CDC and the Health Department, and, uh, the line we used last year, uh, uh, we're on a short leash. Uh, and we're just gonna monitor the situation, uh, every week and go from there, and hopefully we'll have a very good, successful season.
Sure you will.
Uh, let me hit a, we attended, uh, a meeting with RB earlier tonight, and I wanna do the same thing. Uh, with the top, one of the topics was the dog park. Uh, and as you know, Councilman McBane's been very involved with that, so I'd like to, uh, ask Dick to say a couple of comments of that meeting tonight with RB and where the dog park headed.
With, yeah, we, we had the, uh, HRG come in to discuss the, uh, the design of it. Uh, there is no complete design, but they talked a lot about the work that needs to be done to clear up the, uh, trees and underbrush and that sort of thing, and then get the grass planted. Uh, they're going to be putting together a proposal for that work to probably start later this fall. Uh, and hopefully we'll have enough money by spring to get the fencing in, in the spring. There are a number of, uh, ma- mostly maples that he said are the, the nature of the trees. They tend to uh, have a lot of storm damage and things like that. A lot of those will be removed, but the older big oak trees and things like that will remain for shade and everything. Uh, so far, the total amount that's been raised for the doc, dog park is just short of thirty-one thousand. And, uh, so, you know, we're, we're moving along very well. We have several events coming up, uh, in the next month uh, that we hope will raise, uh, quite a bit of money, and of course, the, there's plans for a, uh, beer fest out at, uh, Firestone. And not, not, not in the park, the Firestone Farms, uh, which we think will be very successful and raise quite a bit of money in addition to it. So things look very positive. Uh, we talked about having a, a phase program where, uh, we may eventually expand the, uh, dog park from the proposed, uh, one to one and a half acres to, uh, possibly as much as two and a half acres, uh, but initially, we probably will go with the original plan for the one and a, one to one and a half acres. So I think that pretty well covers it.
Yeah, Ron. Thanks, Dick. Thanks. Uh, another project that we're bringing back this year, as you may remember, we canceled concerts in the park last year. Uh, and we're bringing them back this year. Uh, what came out of last night's meeting is there'll be no concerts in June. Uh, mainly because of all the rest, or the work that's being done on the hill there. But the plan is now to come back for July and August and have a concert every week scheduled instead of every other week. And then at rain dates should give us the opportunity to have at least six concerts in the park for this year. Uh, so that's another one that we're sort of monitoring, uh, along with the parking lot and all. Uh, we have to go with the contractors, but we are bringing concerts in the park back this year. Uh, parking lot, they're working like crazy on it up there to get it done timely. Uh, uh, we've had so- several alternate plans, uh, and, but things are moving along very, very well there. We're very optimistic that things will be ready to go. Uh, one of the areas that, uh, uh, was discussed at RB tonight was the disc golf. Uh, I left before they got to that presentation, uh, but, uh, this golf has worked with, uh, HRG and, uh, uh, R and B to try to fit their disc golf course into the new surroundings in the park, and it's gone extremely well. Uh, the boys at Birdfish have done a wonderful job working with, uh, everybody, and they have their plans ready to go. They've been approved. Uh, they're just waiting to try to wrap up some of these other projects before they get started, but uh, disc golf has been approved, uh, and they'll be starting as soon as possible. Uh, one other, uh, issue with the phase two of RB, uh, they put their priorities, uh, first priority is getting the parking lot done. Uh, I think everybody realizes that with the opening of the park, with the concerts and the pool and, and everything there. All of their efforts are going on to the parking lot, and they'll be starting up phase two as they complete, uh, uh, the parking lot. Uh, a big issue tonight, I, and I'm sure you're privy to most of this, but we had a donor come forward to, uh, build a new girl softball, uh, stadium, uh, in an area of the park. Uh, he was at the, uh, RB meeting tonight with his architectural plans. Uh, he's not gone through any of the procedures with park board and council yet. Uh, but I'll tip you off that, uh, he's ready to go now. Uh, they want a starting date of the end of July. They're gonna wait till the girl softball season is over. And their completion date for that facility, which is gonna be unbelievable, uh, uh, is the end of October. Uh, this gentleman did the same type of a project in Poland. Uh, well-received, uh, and we're looking forward to working with him. Uh, I'll tip you off, just time-wise, as far as approval, uh, from park board and council. We're probably gonna have to have a special meeting. Uh, and I haven't had a chance to even go over this with Lance yet. Uh, but, uh, like we did earlier in the year, we might have a joint meeting to get both of those approvals done so that they can start, have their starting date in July as they wish, but we'll get back to you on that one. Uh, other, other project going on is the stadium, uh, the football stadium home stands. Uh, that group is meeting monthly, uh, and the school has really taken, uh, hold, and things are going fairly well there. It's a slow project. Again, we've had another donor come forward, uh, to, uh, put up the money to, uh, rebuild, rebuild the home football stand, so we'll keep you posted on that one. Uh, again, and the comment came out tonight at the meeting, at the RB meeting. You know, everybody's in a hurry, and everybody wants these projects done tomorrow. And it, it just doesn't go like that. We're real happy with the way things are progressing along, but uh, the progress is slow. Sometimes we hope people are understanding. From the park standpoint, we have had no complaints. I mean, people seemed, in this community, seemed to be very, very, very happy with what, uh, park board, uh, city council and leadership is doing at this point in time. So any questions on any of the projects? Well, that was easy enough.
Yeah, just keep that flag flying, baby.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, this is my fourth meeting in two nights, and I'm, I'm gonna fly. If council has any concerns, please don't hesitate to ask. I mean, sometimes we just take the bull by the horns and run with it. Uh, things have gone well, but please don't hesitate to contact us, uh, if you have any problems, and obviously Lance is our mouthpiece, so, uh, contact him also. Okay?
It's great seeing all the cooperation. And coordination, that's great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Uh, all right. Uh, next on recognition of persons desiring to appear. Uh, Heidi DiTilio with the Chamber of Commerce to discuss a June nineteenth event. Heidi?
Hi, Howard. Um, thank you, council, for allowing me to peer, appear this evening. Sorry, I cannot talk. Um, Renee Durbin is also, um, present at tonight's meeting. She is the new chairperson for the, um, we are calling it the Columbia Community Connection Committee. Um, so we are here this evening to discuss, um, as you know, um, all of the COVID restrictions are lifted as of June second. So we would quickly like to get an event on the books, um, on Main Street. We would like to do our first block party. Um, the proposed date is June nineteenth. Um, we would like to close the street. The block party itself would be from five to eight, but we would like to close the street from four to nine PM. Um, just to give us time to set up and tear down. Um, we would also like to, um, I know the DORA is technically enacted still, I believe, but we would like to um, enact the DORA for this event as well, um, as the block parties have in the past. We would stop serving at eight, um, again, to allow the street to be cleared by nine. And then, um, you know, we will have like food trucks, vendors, things like that. We are having a meeting Friday morning to discuss the details. Um, we have, you know, come very good at planning things quickly, so that's where we're at again with this event. So, um, all of the details are very fuzzy right now, so, but we will have a great event.
Okay. Um. I think we'll consider, uh, motion on that under new business, if that's okay with everyone. Um, but we really appreciate the hard work that the chamber's doing, and, uh, they, they are the definition of flexible, and we appreciate all your work, and, uh, thank you very much, and we'll consider that item under new business.
Okay, I do have one question, um, for the DORA, if that is enacted for our event. Do we tell or speak with, um, like Shellabellas, Ars Pizza, and Birdfish, um, the only remaining um, places that have the DORA now, or is that something that? How does that work? I guess. I know Nicole would know, but.
Yeah, you would contact them directly, get them involved.
Great. All right. We will absolutely do that.
And then what about the cups? How do we go about getting the cups?
So you'll go through. You, you can contact me for that, but we have a. We have a process that we'll do.
Awesome. Okay. Okay, um, should we stay on the meeting to wait for new business or will you notify us? I've never had you guys do this, so I'm just curious.
I can let you know if you'd like.
Okay, that'll be great. I appreciate that. And again, we thank you for your time and we hope to have a great event and it'll be nice to get something back on Main Street this year, so.
Looking forward to it.
Great. That would be great. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna move to the manager's report. First, we have the city manager's update. Lance? You wanna make presentation now?
Sure, thanks. So as Terry and Ron spoke, we're, we're gonna be opening up the pavilions at the pool. We appreciate everything that Park Staff has done in the past year and we're preparing to do to open the pavilions. We, we were working on plans before the governor loosened them up for June second. So we, we thought we were gonna be able to make that deadline or, you know, have the summer filled with pavilions. But the governor's announcement is really gonna help us out there. The council meetings. You know, in the future, we're gonna have to be talking about that. We, we know that we have a. You know, a deadline of July first. I'm not sure if that it'll expire, but I imagine after June second, we'll be meeting in person as much as we can. But we also plan to have Zoom, hoping that we get everything back up and running. Let's see, next thing, we've been, we've been working with the Community Action Agency on utility help for all those impacted by COVID. And we just really, really want people to contact them. They can get on our website for the form. And, you know, work with the Community Action Agency to get utilities reimbursed to them. Clear back and through twenty twenty, April of twenty twenty. So just to let you know that there is, is help. We, we did mention at the last meeting, but just wanna emphasize it. At the last meeting, we discussed briefly the Ohio Rail Development Commission's letter to us. Work, we did make some progress in getting some contacts. What I, at this point, I would think that it would be good for maybe any of you that would be interested into. Getting on a small subcommittee to meet with these people and so we can hear, hear our options. So we move forward. You know, with, with the, the most knowledge that we can. And I believe Jesse can set that up. He's been in contact with them. I mean, it, it might be Zoom, but at least with, we can get our questions answered. Last meeting, we talked about East Southern Alley. We are getting the traffic counter up to help in that study. As you recall, we bought one last year where that, that should be up if it isn't already up. Street Department did lots of patching. They're planning the utilities, both the, well, the, the electric and. Street Department is working on the utilities for the Columbiana Corridor. We, we should be digging that up in the next couple of days. You'll see two trenches in order to put electric and gas. And stormwater, if we ever cover it, we can use those drains. We'll also tie in the downspouts from those buildings there. We did pick up eleven loads of brush. We. I wanna thank a lot of the city workers for hauling millings to the new pool parking lot. We had a lot of millings from. Parking or a paving project from a couple of years ago and we have been able to. Incorporate those grindings into the pool parking lot to help build that up. So it's, it's taken a lot of loads and we'll, we'll have a tally at the end. We didn't attend a meeting for the ODOT paving project. That's the one that East Park Avenue, Springfield Road, Heck Road. Water plant, which we did not do this last year. We did not haul lime. We, we missed the year. This year, we hauled one point five billion gallons and we appreciate that getting done this year. That'll really help out that lagoon and the operation of that. We did service pump, we service pump number one was repaired and it's back in service out there at the water plant. Waste water department, we do have a backwash pump that failed. We ordered two so we could have one on the shelf. Park and Cemetery, burials and cremations, top dressings, all the winter graves. Of course, they're getting the pool ready, turned on the water to all the pavilions. And attended various meetings, you know, throughout for the, the various projects we have going on. And I will say, you know, I mean, that, that's pretty impressive list that of, of all the projects that we have going on in, in the park. You know, I think any one of those would be a good year, but we've got, you know, eight of them going on at the same time, so. That is a lot of, we do appreciate the collaboration that Mayor Noel pointed out, so. Electric Department, they did install a primary cable out there near Route fourteen, that, that new brewery. So we're looking forward to that. Yeah, that's moving right along. And we do thank the street crew and electric crew for installing the sign on Columbiana Corridor. The electric department and the street department will work very close, hand in hand with the. The R and B to, you know, make sure that we get the, the pool parking lot how we'd like it to be and they were very flexible. And we had, we had a lot of input on that and we, we do appreciate them working on that. We also appreciate everything that the projects, you know, all the R and B projects going on is. They're spectacular and we can't wait to. To, you know, to, to see it finish, but we do, they are starting to plan a, some type of ribbon ceremony or cutting for the sports courts. Currently, we're waiting on the, the paint to cure. So the, the paint is down for the tennis and the pickleball courts. And I believe maybe next week those will be opening. And they're, you know, they look ready to go from, from our, our site now, but. We're waiting on that cure, curing process and we'll, we should do that and I'll probably end up sending an email out to you. If we figure out when that ribbon cutting is gonna happen. With that, I think that's, oh, I will note, note that. You know, I, I appreciate your flexibility and patience on the agenda from, from Friday. It, it did change throughout. One of the things that were just added lately. Or tonight was the ODOT paving project that we had mentioned a few weeks ago. We are asking that you pass that as an emergency. We had already passed the preliminary legislation back in October. But we've gotta do this final emergency legislation and, and we do have it on there as an emergency tonight. So we can get that back to ODOT and, you know, get that project going. And with that, I think that's it, Mayor.
Thank you, Lance. Any questions for Lance on his report? If not, I'm gonna move to, you've received in the packet, the Building Zoning Department Report of April twenty twenty one. Anyone have any questions on that report? You also had the Mayor's Court Report of April twenty twenty one was submitted to you. As well as the MS Department Report of April. Any questions on any of those items? Okay, hearing none. Received a copy of the bill list of five four twenty twenty one. Any questions on the bill list?
I believe that should be the bill list of May eighteenth. I think that's a typo. Since today's the eighteenth.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Dan. There are no comments. I'm gonna move to old business. And I'd like to entertain a motion to read all resolutions and motions by title only.
No move.
Second.
Okay, motion second. DM, we call the roll.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Attilio?
Yes. Okay, thank you. The first resolution on the old business is resolution twenty one dash R dash five six nine. This is the second reading. A resolution to concur with the recommendation from the Director of the Ohio Department of Transportation. To modify the present speed limit on a portion of State Route one sixty four in the city of Columbiana.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any questions or comments on the motion?
Lan- Lance, who puts the signs up? Is that us or does the state have to put those up?
I do not know that answer. Might be you. I'll tell you this, Skip, it's either the state or the city.
Oh, that narrows it down. Thanks.
At least we know it's not Mahone County. Now, so is this effective now or is there gonna be a delay? People will ask.
I would, I would wait till the signs are up.
Okay, that's what I figured, but let it ask.
Any other questions? DM, we call the roll.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Attilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolution number twenty one dash R dash five seven zero. This is also a second reading. A resolution declaring the necessity of installing certain improvements to portions of the city of Columbiana. And to assess certain tracts of land to be benefited through the installation of such improvements.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any questions? Comments? DM?
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Attilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Lance, I may need. Did not discuss this next motion. I noticed on the agenda says motion to table.
Sure, I can handle that one.
Yes, please.
So two weeks ago tonight, we voted the first reading on this particular ordinance. And then the next morning found out that it needed to be passed as an emergency. So we had a special meeting on that Saturday, following that Saturday. And we had a new ordinance that was passed as an emergency. Our charter does not allow us to vote on anything, one said ordinance within the, intent, within ten days of each other. So we could not at that special meeting table it at that because it'd only been about five days since we had. First voted on it. So we left it on there to motion to table that ordinance. It was up for second reading. But what we'll do is just table it and we'll never bring it off the table. The emergency ordinance that you all came in and passed on, we've already processed that. And, and move forward on that. So we, we do appreciate that. Actually, tomorrow morning, we're gonna. Have a, a, a brief meeting on, on that as, as far as. You know, the actual project, so we're gonna table this and we're going to leave it there forever.
I'm, okay, so we're looking for a motion to table ordinance number twenty one dash O dash three zero seven eight.
So moved.
There's motion. Second. Second. DM?
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Attilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Hey, thank you. Under new business. I would like to discuss at this time. The issue of brought forward to us by the Chamber of Commerce regarding a block party event on Main Street. That was what, June seventeenth?
June nineteenth, I think.
June nineteenth, excuse me. With the inclusion of a door of it to the event. So I'd like a motion to deal with that matter.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, there's a motion and second. Is that clear, clear enough for the motion statement? DM? I did not put the time.
Right, we should include the time and closure of the street.
I think she requested it.
She requested the event to be held from five to eight and the street to be closed from four to nine. With the alcohol serving stopping at eight o'clock.
With that clarification, is that okay to the mover and second of that motion?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion on that motion?
Let's get her done. Be nice to get back to real something real around here.
Yeah. It's really great. Okay, DM, we call the roll.
Listen?
Yes.
Attilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Okay. The next two, the resolution and ordinance are emergencies. So I need to, I need a motion to approve the following resolution and ordinance as an emergency. Third second?
Second. Enter seconded.
Thank you. Any discussion? Dan, we call the roll.
Attilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
What about movement on the, for the Columbiana Music Boosters?
Well, unfortunately, I was trying not to show that I made a mistake and I asked Dan to make that motion earlier in the meeting. And Dan Attilio, so we've already proved that if I'm not incorrect.
You're correct. We did improve the, we did approve the band boosters earlier in the meeting.
I just thought that you were gonna act upon it later on in the meeting, but, okay.
Well, I, I apologize for getting excited about the music booster event. Okay, I'm gonna move to resolution number twenty one. Okay, I'm going to move to resolution number 21 dash R dash 571, emergency. An emergency final resolution authorizing the city manager of the city of Columbia here and after referred as the local public agency to execute a contract with ODOT for the resurfacing of State Route 164 from Mahoning, Columbia County line and the N corp limit, including pavement repair and pavement markings lying within the city of Columbia.
So moved.
Second.
There's a second. Any discussion or question on that motion? Hearing none, DM, we call the roll.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Attilio?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, this is ordinance number 21 dash O dash 3080. This is an emergency. An emergency ordinance codifying certain recommended guidelines and directive as issued by both the Ohio Department of Public Health and the Centers for Disease Control on the opening of public swimming pools during the current coronavirus pandemic as applicable to the opening of Firestone Park Pool for the 2021 season.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. DM, we call the roll.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Attilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Very good, another great, great thing happening there. Thank you. Lance, just to discuss with you quickly. The executive session, there will be no action taken?
Correct.
So we can maybe postpone that and go through the rest of the meeting. So we can allow the public to hear and comment throughout the meeting that will continue. Okay, so I'm going to go first to, is there anyone from the public who would like to make any comments at this time? Okay. And I'm hearing none. Next, we have the council comments.
I, I asked last meeting for council, if they just see if they come up with any kind of recommendations on supporting the police department. Anybody thought of anything that they might like to try to do? I talked to, I talked to the chief and he had a couple of recommendations. One would be supporting the police with class C uniforms. And another recommendation would be some kind of a meet and greet for the council. And I've opened up and pushed that open to more of the council and the chamber. Meet and greet with the police department so we get to know them. I'm not sure what that, what entails or if it'll ever happen, but thought might be cook some hamburgers, hot dogs out in the parking lot or something like that and just stand around laughing. I did talk to Eric. He hasn't gotten back with me yet. I'll bug him tomorrow. But we're going to try to push something through to just show the support for our, for our boys and something to pop them around a little bit more than it is right now. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Skip, for leaving that out.
Skip, I'm just curious, what would a class C uniform look like, do you think?
That's the uniform is, it's a khaki, well, our class C uniform would be like a, it's almost like a green pot, green pants with a side pockets and stuff like that. And it's a slightly different colored shirt with the emblem on it, the police badge. And the, the best number I got so far was probably around, around $90 a uniform, say $100 a uniform. And we'd be looking at about 13 uniforms according to the chief, so. Again, that's.
The chief had on tonight, that's what you're describing.
Yes, exactly. Those of you that did see the chief, that's exactly what the uniform is.
And when would they, when would they use those uniforms as opposed to the primary uniforms?
It's more of a summer uniform when it's hot out. But they cannot use it for any court proceedings or anything that's a little bit more formal. They must use their, where their class Bs at least. So it's just, it's just a casual summer uniform.
I, I personally love both of those ideas. I think, you know, I would love to meet our police officers. I know we kind of meet a piecemeal here and there. Most of the time we don't meet them and that's a good thing. But I think it, I think it would be great to actually get to meet those guys. And, and I know a few of them, but obviously not all of them. So I would be supportive of both of those ideas.
Well, I'll, I'll keep up to speed on what's going on. Like I said, I still want to talk to Eric and see what he's coming up with and see if I can. I'm certain he's got a fund there that we can use. But.
You know, Lance could just pull it out of petty cash, right?
That was Dan Attilio.
And Dan, you're going to meet the police sooner than you think.
Probably a detective.
Okay, I'll keep you informed.
Thanks, thanks for your work, Skip. Any other comments, council comments? I would just like to say, we had so many great things we talked about tonight. I know it's hard to try to decide which one we should talk about. But I think they're all good things and that's great. I just want to quickly mention that the elementary school, Joshua Dixon, every year holds a spring fling. And they used to have it at Joshua Dixon in their parking lot. And it was a place for the kids to come out and bounce arounds and various things for the kids to get on. And because the school has control of the football stadium, they used the football stadium this year, last weekend. And the place was packed. If any of you went there, it was fantastic. The public comments were just tremendous. The kids were running all over the football field, having a great time. And to tie it into the police, our police had a dunk tank. And it was really great. The kids were having a ball knocking the police under the water. And I even took a shot at them. And it was quite enjoyable, but it's great to see the people really enjoying the football stadium and, and the school using that facility. So I'd just like to throw kudos out to everybody that pulled that event off. Any other comments?
You know, we talked a little, little bit about the music boosters. I just want to comment that they had their annual band concerts over the weekend. I know I saw Ted at one of them and I got to, I attended two of them. And it was, especially the high school band, I was at the sixth and seventh grade band and they did a great job. But the high school band, it's, it's amazing. We have some very talented musicians in the city that the concert was just amazing. And it was, I was glad that the school, you know, found a way to put that on because of all the social distancing and all of the, and all of the, you know, rules and regulations, they found a way to make it happen. And, you know, the kids did a great job. It's, it's really a blessing for them to be able to do that. And it was fun to listen to. They did, they did their, they actually wrote a song. They had a song commissioned specifically for Columbia for our music program called Agent 54. It's kind of a spy theme song and it was a blast, ton of fun to listen to. So looking forward to, you know, to be able to see them more next year when we don't have to deal with COVID anymore, hopefully.
That's great. Any other council comments? Okay. So at this point, we finished all the public business that will need to take place tonight. There won't be any more action taken tonight. So I would entertain a motion to hold an executive session discussing, discussion of collective bargaining matters, section 121, day point 22 G4.
Don't move.
Don't move. Second.
Okay, there's motion second. We call the roll, DM?
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Attilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries. So we're going to be moving into executive session. Apparently you'll have to join. It's like everyone is back. Okay. You missing anybody? Okay, I'm looking for a motion to come out of executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Hold on, did we see Dan?
I don't see Dan.
Wait a second, yeah, that's.
Yeah, I don't see Dan Attilio.
He's no longer in the meeting.
Okay, so. Well, we could probably, I mean, I can call him.
We only need four votes to come out.
So, right.
Yeah, we still have a quorum.
Yeah.
Yeah, why don't we go with that? Motion out of executive session.
Yeah, we have a motion.
Second, then we determine that even, okay, so it's a motion second. We know we need.
Can we discuss this? Can we get a discussion before the vote?
No, you have to, you have to come out of executive session first and then you could have discussion.
Okay, so we have a motion second. Could you call the roll, DM?
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Attilio is not present. Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion carries. We have officially come out of executive session.
Correct. Since, since Dan didn't make it back, I'd like to at least throw out there that his pay be docked some.
If it counts, he's on the phone with me.
That's half pay.
Okay, hearing no other business, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Motion carries, meeting is adjourned.
Thanks, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.